It's got the video too.
Are you able to hear us now?
Yeah. Turning the videos outside.
Are you able to hear us now?
Yep, they can hear you.
They can hear you.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm here then.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm getting a text in my.
Yeah. Alright. Okay, great. Bring the screen back up of them. Perfect. Alright, so we were at um with the dog officer, she had an emergency on North Road.
Right, but she's doing all the reports that she's had from any.
Okay.
But it just reported any incidents over there as they, you know.
Okay.
Where she was originally, if you're interested at the end.
Alright. So, okay, alright. Anthony, if you want to speak on this part of how things have been going as far as, and then any response to, I think that, let's start back on February 21st of this year. And a couple of the questions was one why, why you were operating, but it was under appeal, so legally you could still operate.
Sure.
So, um, so essentially it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, either by phone or by email.
And I believe the animal control officers went over with you, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
I literally got my.
Yeah. So I didn't. No, I am not there. Yeah, no, we sat down, we went over all of the individual things, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members. My ash, I represent Anthony Aldonis and what a special permit. And he personally has, well, the case is pending, he has fifteen dogs there. And I will explain to you that people come at different times, usually seven to nine in the morning, four to six. Some dogs stay overnight, five to six dogs out of the fifteen, he picks up and drops off. So there isn't much of a traffic because people come at different times and some people leave the dogs overnight. And as far as noise, he's received only, never heard from any about it about any problem. He's checked with the dog officer and heard that there was one complaint that a dog barked for ten minutes. The dogs are in and out of the structure, they, they're generally well behaved dogs. He's putting up, he just put in a new separate system, putting up a fence. And he, he does noise containment measures to make sure that there's no noise. So he doesn't believe that he's interfering with anyone's peaceful enjoyment as to traffic or noise. No, everyone has his phone number, no one's called him and said they have a problem because he would, he would deal with it if there was a problem. But these, with the fifteen dogs, he doesn't have any problem. Now, he's seeking up to twenty-five under his kennel license on the two and a half acres. And the reason he's doing that is because he has tremendous demand for this type of service. In fact, he has a long waiting list and every doggy daycare in Worcester County, I understand, has a long waiting list. There's two of his clients here tonight who are here. And this is a public service, people need a place to keep their dogs either overnight when they go away or during the day. He takes very good care of his animals. He has people following every day that he can't take because he doesn't have the capacity. And he's very diligent about taking care of the animals and, and, and not interfering with anyone's rights. Now, I understand, I wasn't here last time, but I understand that some people claim there was a lot of traffic. He will tell you that the most he has at any time there and at the busiest time is maybe he would have two or three cars. People come at different times and they're not there. And he's trying to expand the pickup and drop off because some of his customers are not in Charlton. He has a lot of Charlton customers, but he has some in other towns who are looking for a place for their animals. So he doesn't think that he's, that he's doing what he should be doing. I understand this other doggy daycares in town, though he gets along very well with the dog officer. I understand she just called him that a cat was hit and she had to take the cat to Tufts Hospital for emergency treatment. But he's in contact with her all the time. He's very diligent on, on making sure that this is not a facility that would interfere with anyone. He plans to put up a new fence which will also help with noise, but he doesn't think there's much of any noise. These dogs are in and out and there really isn't much barking or anything going on. So we feel that a special permit is appropriate under the zoning bylaw. It fulfills a public need and he's, he's not doing anything that's improper. Now, the last meeting that cut him down to zero is in fact putting him out of business and putting all his clients at great disadvantage because they have no other place to find to put their animals. As the people who are here will tell you, there's nowhere else to go. There is, there is a great demand for these type of facilities because a lot of people have animals and got animals during the pandemic. Now they're back to work, they're not working remotely and they can't leave their animals all day and they don't want to, they want to take care of them. So he's willing to deal with anyone who has a problem, he's never heard from anyone. He wants to be a good neighbor, bought this property to improve it. And, and he frankly wants to serve the public and make a living there. And so we feel that, we appreciate the rehearing on remand, but we feel that, you know, it's appropriate. Now, he's willing to take less than twenty-five in the board's discussion. And he's, 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 by picking up and dropping off the dogs, he's, he's cutting down on the traffic. But not everyone comes at the same time because people have different work hours and, and there's different reasons. So there's, there's not that much going on and of course he respects his neighbors. And, and certainly wants to not interfere with their peaceful enjoyment of the property or interfere with their rights to property. He feels he's not, he's not doing that, he's not doing anything. And, and he's willing to, to listen to anyone who has any, has any complaints. Thank you very much.
Alright.
And be glad to answer any questions and my clients will answer any questions or, 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 or concerns.
Great. And can the board have any comments or questions for the applicant?
Um, I'm sorry, is it okay to speak?
No, not yet. I'll open it to the public in a couple of minutes, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's alright. Yeah, go right ahead.
Anthony, have you seen the other emails from the neighbors and residents? I mean, we've seen them because it's come to the fore, I don't know if you've had.
I've intermittently seen like a couple of them, like if there was anything that required immediate attention, Emily would send it over and be like, hey, do you have a response to this? I would send her either video footage or, you know, that type of stuff. Or I actually have a noise monitoring system that I've installed around my property just to make sure that I'm maintaining that level of quiet rural neighborhood. There's a legal like kind of definition for the amount of decibels that that is. So I need to track that in order to make sure that I was maintaining it. So I would send all of that information over her. So I've seen some of, some of it, I don't know if there's anything kind of new. She did mention we met about the incident that had happened two Fridays ago, the ten minutes of barking which was mentioned. So we went over that and I, but I did not physically see any of the complaints, so.
And just to put it on the record for council as well, there's been a bunch of emails that have come into this office. A neighborhood petition was signed and circulated around with, I think it was over twenty signatures. We don't have it in front of us today, but just to put it on record, even though what I, I heard is no one has called you perhaps, you know, maybe they've registered complaints through other channels.
Yeah, he hasn't received any complaint and he's always available, he hasn't, he hasn't, he hasn't received any complaint from any neighbor. Telephone or email or written communication or call said, hey, we got a problem with you. We got a problem with what you're doing. He hasn't heard from anyone and at all. I have not seen any of those communications, I have not seen.
I believe.
The one that we submitted to the board, prior to today was the one that is, there's an email with an Excel spreadsheet on it with, you know, different time and everything. I had received that previously, anything else was worth a darn. The animal control officer brought it tonight, but it was literally like four or seven, so.
And there were, there was just like a neighborhood petition was signed and circulated, a letter, there's. Yeah.
Approval, yeah.
This is the original petition, just to clarify, this is the original petition that was at the last meeting, not one since, correct?
But the original one.
Yeah.
Here. Yeah. And I would point out, he's on two and a half acres, there's someone who's what fifty yards away.
It's about fifty feet from the property.
Fifty feet and then all the other people are, are, are much farther away. So you, you question whether they could even hear, hear some dog. But, you know, it keeps, the dogs are in, most of the time inside, they go outside. In, would you tell the board what kind of noise containment system you have?
Sure, so basically our, our goal, as I had mentioned in the previous meetings, is that we have kind of a two-minute threshold. If a dog has received a couple of corrections, a couple of redirections, and they're not doing anything, I, it's like a free strike rule, basically. They get brought inside and they just have some quiet time inside. Obviously, everything that I'm saying is with the exception, and I can explain in detail kind of what happened with that ten-minute situation. There was a perfect, perfect storm, but it was the one major situation that's happened kind of the last ten months that I've been in operation. So for that, I, I think that we should give ourselves a pat on the back because we've done a very good job maintaining to not have ten minutes worth of barking up to this point. So that's kind of the free strike rule, like I said, if the dog is being particularly excitable or they are trying to engage in really rough play with someone, we're going to separate them and we're going to give them some downtime. What we have found, and it's, this whole situation unfortunately made me shelf my, everything that I learned in dog training, exposure is what fixes problems. So there was a lot of barking when UPS trucks were to buy and when people would pull into driveways and when bikers would go by. That has very much decreased, if not stopped entirely, when those random things happen. Because rather than trying to keep the dogs away from it and let them be exposed to it, I went out and I met them and I said, hey, it's okay, there's nothing to worry about. Give them a couple of treats and they're fine. So we've really reduced that type of sudden interactions. The, uh, obviously, you know, it's, it's somewhere outside, transitions are probably the most complicated time for us. And when I say complicated, what I mean is anytime the dogs are running outside to go playing, there's a couple of barks when they're running back. When they want to come back inside, they let me know by barking, that's if the doors are closed. If I leave my house open, as was done today, it was a really nice day outside, I turned over the pool several times, like little dog pool. They were outside all day and they were almost completely silent, I had fourteen dogs in my house today. So that's one of those things is depending on just how much we can mitigate the number of transitions they have to go through and just making sure that everybody's playing appropriately and that nobody's getting impacted. So those are really what we're doing right now to mitigate any sudden noise things. And then like I said, going back, I always am checking, I have an alert set up with the noise monitoring software. So that if I happen to be out and my staff are working, I know that something has happened and I can immediately hold my camera system and check and see what's going on and I give them a call.
What decibel level?
Uh, so a decibel level that is considered acceptable is sixty decibels in the neighborhood. So that's kind of like a light breeze, light conversation type of a thing. A dog's bark can be as loud as ninety decibels, but that's like the largest great day in your life. I put these noise monitors at my property line. So obviously anything after that, there is noise drop off. For every one hundred feet, there is a six decibel drop off. So there are, if there have been times like, and I can even show you on the, on the chart if you wanted to see it. Like this ten-minute incident that happened, that was in the middle of my property. So at the property line, I had just crested that threshold because there was a pack of dogs barking. It was like that for ten minutes and then there was a steep drop off. But for the majority of every day, we are well below that threshold. One of the complaints that I think was on there back from February or March, I think was the initial email that I saw, that was one where I, there were three times in the day or three different days. Something, it was something about the weather had just started to get warm. I sent Emily an email that explained all of my sound monitoring, what it read as, I sent her the charts, I sent her the, the times of day that were reported. And in two of the occasions, the most egregious thing that happened on those days was it was an extremely windy day. So my noise monitors pick up wind, obviously. My dogs were not louder than the wind blowing that day per the noise monitors. And the other day, we were cutting up a tree with a chainsaw. So that was the other egregious thing that happened that day. So again, it is something that I monitor very closely because I am aware, I'm in a residential neighborhood. I do everything that I can to make sure that everybody can enjoy the time when they're home. I operate, like I said, seven in the morning till six to nine. Every day at four o'clock, the dogs go out one last time and I bring them in and then they're inside after four P M. So that transition, obviously the exception if they have it well, but I try to keep them inside after four P M. And because it has been so hot, we want to keep them cool anyway, so.
Alright, thank you.
No problem.
Any questions that's bouncing the board?
Yeah, I do have a question. Okay. I believe Anthony didn't get any direct phone calls through him because we asked and informed everybody to please let the dog officer know that we had a record of it. And so he.
That's right.
We didn't really, I mean, we didn't want to bother him, not bother him, but we wanted a record through the dog officer or through this office, which we got some through here. But we sort of said, don't call Anthony, call us, so we'd have a record.
For what it's worth, the two, there were two conversations that I had since January with animal control regarding incidents. So any incidents that were reported either for this office were not forwarded to me. So there would have been no way for me to address those issues. So I just think that that's an important component to this as well.
Go ahead to the chair. So I'm looking at, this Excel spreadsheet, I was, this is some logs and I, I think it's. I'm sorry, we were putting the pressure on the, the neighborhood to, to log everything that's happening and stand around and report this, it's just, it's a burden on, on them too. But I, I did notice that some of the logs showed early morning hours, two, three o'clock in the morning, seeing multiple dogs.
So this is a really interesting point actually, and I'm, I'm really glad that that's been brought up. My dogs are not out at two or three in the morning. I think in the last eight months, I have had one incident where a dog had diarrhea and they had to go out in the middle of the night. And then it was addressed within a day or two. However, there are at least four or five homes in the area that have dogs. One of those homes has two dogs that are often out at nine o'clock at night barking. I don't know who they are, but I can hear them from my house. And given that all of the houses are in the other direction and that's the direction of the dogs, it's highly likely they're hearing those dogs. But my dogs are not out past six, seven o'clock for their last bathroom break and then they come in. And I think that that's another important part about these logs. You know, they're great, like, but there are dogs in the neighborhood.
Sure, it's, it's difficult to.
And I don't think at this point has anyone either animal control or this board received like in a video of any type of thing coming from my property, you know? So that's, I think, an important piece of this as well is that there are other dogs in the neighborhood. Again, with the sole exception of what happened two Fridays ago, there's no way of proving that it's my dogs that are doing that.
And I think you weren't home for, you were away for a little while and that ten-minute barking.
Yeah, what, just to explain kind of what happened in that situation so everybody has a full understanding. We had a client that was going to be dropping off two dogs for boarding. I was out mowing my lawn, my lawnmower ran out of gas, I did not have any gas. We were below ratio that day, so I was able to leave the house. So Jordan was there, she was outside with the dogs, these clients showed up when they weren't supposed to. Which is fine, things happen, she walked out, she met with them, she instructed them to stay in their car so that she could take care of the dogs. They did not listen to her instructions, they brought their dogs up to the house unbeknownst to us because they did not put it in their profile. One of their dogs had fence aggression, so they started going at the fence and the dog started barking at them. She was there by herself. So she called me, that was part of the reason there was such a delay, but she was like, what do I do right now? So I turned around, I didn't even get the gas and I was home within three minutes. By the time I had gotten there, she had settled everything. But like I said, I went back, I reviewed the footage, I watched what she did, everything she did wasn't broken for the craziness of the situation. But it did resolve itself from start to finish in ten minutes.
One more quick question, so you, you, you said you had two and a half acres?
Two and a half acres, yes.
Acres, yes. How much of that property is usable and how much of it is covered with unusable property?
Yeah, so currently, where I would say we're utilizing, uh, the, the, it's less than an acre, this, this, this is my father, he's one of the owners of the property. But, uh, so there's a strip of land, wetland that kind of goes behind our property and then there's the rest of the pasture. Right now, because of the subjects, it's a lot of the grass coming in, obviously, everything. The space that's been reduced, I would say we use probably about half an acre in the backyard. But it's probably once, once the new fencing is put up and everything, it'll be, I, I think, you know, three quarters of an acre, two an acre, once I have everything set up.
What kind of fencing are you putting in?
Uh, I have six foot steel and I just need to refurbish and repaint. So that's going to be what's going in.
Privacy fencing.
It will be, it's actually just steel poles, but I will be purchasing two, they have these kind of mesh windbreaker things that will be to deter the dogs from kind of seeing anything outside. So it will be a blackout fence that, that goes around me for the emergency.
Anything else from the board? Questions at home? John, you good? Okay. Alright, this time I'd like to open the comments and questions to the public. If you have a comment or question, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Angela Giorgio and Kevin Giorgio, we are at eighty-two Little Mugget Road.
Yes.
We're directly across the street.
Yep.
Um, I'll make it quick. Um, I, I don't ever want to deny anybody anything, I just, I'm having a really hard time and feel very uncomfortable in my own home. I don't feel when these dogs are barking that I have to stop what I'm doing to go over to speak to him. My husband is in treatment for cancer right now. In June thirtieth, I believe it was, I'm a teacher, so I just got summer vacation and I was home about nine thirty. He had just had radiation and could not sleep. It was a ten-minute, I, I was so upset, he couldn't sleep. I called the dog officer and she said, well, you can go over. I said, I'm not going to someone's house every day. I don't, there's, traffic isn't bothering me, they're not bad neighbors. But one day, and I really hate to say this, we were, we had a baby over here about two years old. And I don't know who yelled this, but the dogs were barking probably first week of July into June, the same timeframe, I called the officer. And somebody from the house yelled out, a female, shut the F up. And I said, is this what we're going to listen to now with kids around? I, I, really upset me, I've never called in eight months, I live across the street, I hear it. That really bothered me for a child to have to hear that in a neighborhood. I know people have dogs and all the years, here's twenty years we've lived here. I don't hear dogs occasionally a bark. I don't even know my neighbors who has dogs around here because I don't hear any except across the street. And this has just put my husband and I in a really difficult situation. I don't want to be a bad neighbor, I don't want to be calling the police, I don't want to be calling the dog officer. If I have a baby over here, hearing the language I did makes me wonder how much control is over these dogs if you have to yell that, whoever did, I don't even know. And then, on the other hand, I feel bad for dogs that are inside all day. I mean, but I wonder what happens if you grant this petition? Yeah, they've been quiet, but once it's granted, what are we in for? I mean, I'm right across the street and on days my husband goes to treatment and he needs to sleep, he can't. And it happened the first week of July, he got home from treatment trying to sleep and he, and he called the police department because he couldn't sleep.
And he said it wasn't a police matter, I called the, called the dog officer. So it's like going around and around and around, we'd like to see something get done.
I, I just, I, that, that's really like, I feel bad for the dogs that have to be in all day because if they're out, I'm sure they're going to bark. I don't want to disturb these people and feel like I have to have bad blood with my neighbors. I, we've lived here twenty years in Charlton, it's a great place to live, I, I, I just don't even know what to say, it's extremely stressful. Because we're directly across the street and I'm afraid going forward, once it's granted twenty-five, fifteen dogs, I've owned dogs, I know how they can bark. I mean, I, I guess, you know, I've never really complained ever until these three incidents from June, end of June to now, where he called, I called and I heard that language yelled at, I, I assumed dogs because they were barking. And that was what was said, was just screaming, shut the F up. And I, I said to my husband, is that the control over the dogs? Because I'm not going to go over there now. So I feel bad for the dogs, I feel bad for them, I feel bad for everybody else. I did, that's really, I don't even, I'm sorry, I don't even know what else to say.
Alright Angela, thank you very much for your comments and concerns. Is there anyone else from the public? Has a comment or question?
Yes, Susan Kozak, seventy-nine Little Mugget Road. I have to echo what Angela and Kevin just said. It's not, there are a lot of dogs in our area, in our neighborhood and we don't hear them. It's the dogs that are there, Anthony, that are here. I, they bark at me when I go up my driveway, when I go down my driveway, they bark at me when I come home, if they're out. They bark amongst themselves when I've seen only like five or six dogs. And we, we love our neighbors. We want to, you know, be good neighbors with you, Randy, you know, you know, your parents. And, you know, we don't want to have bad blood between us or anything like that. But we also want to be, I mean, whatever happened to the quiet enjoyment of your own home? I hear them and, and sometimes it drives me crazy. You know, and I'm not going to call you all the time, again, we were instructed to call animal control. I'm not always home, a lot of these people are home, they work from home and they hear more than we do. Ken's going to be home soon, alive, he's going to hear it. You know, I hear it on the weekends, I hear it in the evenings, I, I hear it when I come home, I hear it, you know, in the mornings. It shouldn't be that way. And you can have ten thousand clients here, it has nothing to do with your business. It has to do with the noise, the noise and the disturbance. We wouldn't do that to you, none of our neighbors, none, you know, are loud, have, you know, parties after hours or playing music, loud music, we all respect each other, we all care for each other, we all doubt for each other. Can I get an amen? Amen. Seriously. And the other thing about, you know, the acreage, there probably is only half an acre because the rest of it is swamp. So it's, it's not, you know, conducive for, you know, all these dogs. And, you know, um, it, it, it's just, it is a disturbance, it is a disturbance. And I remember asking the board, would you want one? And most of you said no, because you know, you know. We're not against him having a business. We're not against his, him having a business, it's, the location is too close to everyone else, dogs are gonna bark. And, and like we had said, a lot of people, we found out how many people actually have dogs, we don't hear their dogs, we get these dogs.
Great, thank you very much, any other comments or questions?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to rebut that. My parents.
Wait, name and address.
Uh, sorry, Randy Eldorff, I live in, uh, Lester, I also call on him.
Okay.
Yeah, it probably was previously owned by my parents.
Yep.
They had a kennel license for six or seven dogs, they had dogs every year. And I know for a fact, when I went over there with my pet, I know, it was always barking, always noise, I go over there now, not the same. I don't hear the barking like they did. So I'm just kind of curious of why.
Yeah.
If, if it was a kennel license there before and was barking, why they now bringing this up? Because I know when I, every time I go over there, I walk in, and they hear one or two dogs bark, and I go in, and then it's quiet. I, I just.
Randy, you don't live there.
I don't live there.
Oh, oh, we're not getting into a back and forth, one, one, one.
I, I did live there for several months when my parents were ill.
Yeah.
And I can tell you right now, your comment about other dogs in the neighborhood, there's two dogs that live across the way from my parents. That bark all the time, they're out all the time, they're out all hours of the night. So, yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm not buying it.
Good, all right, thank you, all right, sir, you're up next.
I'm Ken Kozak, seventy-nine Little Mugget Road, uh, Randy, um, Anthony, this is Aaron's great, great family. We have nothing against family, not at all, I wanted to put that. I have issues with, I know you, um, Randy, you just, I want to rebuttal that, but I don't have all the facts. You said a kennel license, I mean, we were extremely close with your parents, you know that. There was never a business there, James and Ruby, of course, showed. Uh, James came in third in the Westminster Dog Show, just to let you know, so we're talking pup not dog. Okay, very well behaved, and Jane, right, James is gone, Ruby's gone. Um, and they were really strict to making sure that our peace was not disturbed. And they told me flat out, if, if you hear the dogs, we don't, cause they're old and they had, they didn't hear some, sometime calls, so we did. Sam, of course, you know, it was whining, and I know you quieted that down tremendously, um, but, that's only him, I'm gone at four o'clock in the morning, I don't get back till two thirty, three o'clock, sometimes a lot later than that. So I can't tell you what happens during the day. Except the fact I'm out, I'm at work one day directing traffic and I get multiple phone calls from multiple neighbors saying the dogs are out of control, and this happened not just one day, it happened two or three days, what can we do? I said, we were instructed by the board to call animal control. We did, there's no answer, and called the police, well, they won't do anything, call them back again and keep filing phone calls, because the police are gonna be annoyed, I'm a police officer myself, and it's gonna be listed as a disturbance call, not just a noise complaint. That's what, that's the phone calls that I was getting. I realized by the time, some of them were really gone crazy, I'm sure you would have, by the time I would have contacted Anthony, whose phone number I have, he would have taken care of it, however, it had gone past that. The land, I don't know where you plan to put the extra, because unfortunately, he just had a septic system put in and he was forced to put it out in the front, rather than go down the back, so that took away the front. Um, he can't do it out back, cause that's all swamp, if it wasn't, he would have been allowed to put a septic system there. I don't know where you plan to put it, if you plan to put it where I told your grandfather about when we got stuck in the, the muck. I don't know, are you gonna go right down the, am I allowed to ask a question? Are you gonna go like right down the street and put a fence so you can expand it that way?
Yeah, so my, uh, my plan, um, in the interim is to move the fence that was in the back of the house to the front of the house. Um, so that would add another fifty feet by eighty feet, so whatever that amount is. Um, and then, because I have four hundred feet of fence that I purchased, um, I'm gonna replace where the old horse walk-around thing is and put it over on that side, um, so it would kind of separate it into two areas.
So if, if, if it's, but it's gonna be closer to the street though, right?
No, I, I can leave a brush there, I'm gonna put it behind the brush in the field, there's probably, uh, best guess, between where the wetlands start, because there is a, a very solid strip of land, um, I had a, 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 uh, landscaping person last year who started to clear out some of that stuff, I mean, I'd say there's probably about fifty feet, um, a fifty foot strip, uh, before we actually get to the wetlands. Um, that is, is absolutely usable, um, land, um, so I mean, I could turn that into a, a fifty by fifty play area easily, um. We currently, yeah, we use it for the, for the shit for the kids, whenever we have family events and stuff, we play games back there, so it's a very usable.
Cause my, my question, if you put them on the street line, is it now gonna cause them to be barking more as people walk by, as people walk, the dogs?
Well, as, as was mentioned, I, I have every intention of getting the, uh, the blackout screens that go in front of them, um, so it'll look like privacy fence, but it was a fancy looking privacy fence, a black screen.
My issues. All right, let me throw it in.
Uh, Jackie at sixty-seven Little Mugget.
Yeah.
Um, so the land is a concern, because I don't think you can disturb wetlands, so you have to be cautious of that, I believe. And then, the other thing is, how big is the space if you're keeping the dogs inside? Because I've had a dog in basically my whole life, and the smallest house that I've had is twelve hundred square feet, and that was barely enough room for one dog. So, I believe your house is roughly a thousand square feet, how do you keep fifteen to twenty-five dogs in there? If you have that on one day, are you just caging them all into like little pens? Or like, what is the space? Because that's bordering into animal cruelty.
Well, no.
And recording.
He's had to go through inspection, through animal control, to approve the facility. She's inspected it thoroughly.
She's inspected it twice.
Twice and it's.
Both times, and it is.
So the zero issue is.
For how many dogs?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
All in there at one time?
Yes, so, um, may I address the question?
Go ahead.
Was that the?
Animal Control has inspected and has approved it, the facility for storage of the dogs.
Still, okay, storage.
And, and then the animal control is the approving authority in the town.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, every threshold in my house has a gate, um, it's a built-in gate, really just to, to help it, so that when we do transition dogs, mostly for sending them home, um, we could put dogs in a room and then we can take them out.
Right.
Um, during naptime, we have structured naptime every day, um, every dog just kind of decides where they're gonna go. Now, you said, yes, my, my house is roughly a thousand square feet, um, that does not include the unfinished basement that's downstairs, that runs the length of the house, um, so, double that.
And that's habitable for dogs as?
Uh, yeah, a hundred percent, it actually stays very cool, we keep it, um, climate controlled down there, I have heaters and, uh, air conditioners that I utilize and, uh, humidity sensors and everything, so yes, very, it's a very habitable location, again, that was also, uh, inspected and approved by animal control. Um, so the space is, is really not the issue, um, at all, because even that, when you take into account the, the outside space, um, really the only times they're ever all indoors like that would be, uh, like thunderstorms like we've had recently.
Yeah.
Um, but even those days, we do structured activities, um, with them, so we do, uh, dog games, where we have, you know, puzzles, that they have like a food out and like that type of stuff. Um, we'll do some really basic training stuff, um, you know, I have definitely some clients who are more stubborn than others. Um, but, you know, we just try to make it fun for them and keep them intellectually stimulated and we can't keep them physically stimulated. Um, also, not all of our dogs are seventy-five pounds or more, um, some of our dogs are seven pounds, so it's very manageable if you think about fifteen, twenty-pound dogs, as opposed to fifteen, a hundred-pound dogs. Um, I actually put a joke, uh, up on, uh, our Facebook page one day, saying that we had roughly a thousand pounds of dog there that day. Uh, but, they were all gentle giants, and it was wonderful to have all of them, and naptime was a giant cuddle party on our couch, it was awesome. Um, so, realistically, um, you know, the, 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 the numbers in the space do work out. Um, we have plenty of water available for them, uh, if, upon request, uh, we'll feed them, um, if their owners ask for that, uh, we do a structured feeding. So it is a very structured environment that we keep indoors, um, to manage that. And I think that that is the difference between the business operation that we have and kind of the average person who has a dog. Um, I do train it, I've met people who say, hey, I have a dog and they have a problem that they want to fix. Um, you can't fix a problem with a dog, you can fix the problem that is within the home. Um, dog training involves changing yourself, and it's a really hard point to get to in any point of the training, because it means saying, okay, maybe I'm the problem, that maybe I'm the reason my dog is not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, training dogs is training people's heart, and that's one of the, again, jokes I always make in the beginning of all of my training sessions. Um, because we run everything so structured at our house. Um, and, uh, again, uh, to address the complaint that was made, um, about the language, uh, I, though I was not there, that may have happened the day when everything was happening, um, I had a staff meeting and I said, look, I understand these dogs are frustrating sometimes, but if this did happen, it can't. Um, so it was addressed and squashed at that point, um, and that, too, that was an internal issue that was dealt with. Um, but, on the day-to-day, we offer a very structured environment, um, and I think that's the reason that by word of mouth, we've done one advertising campaign and it was eight posts on Facebook, um, word of mouth is what has gotten me all of my customers. Um, you can look at my reviews online, um, they all speak for themselves, I don't have to say anything.
All right, any other questions or comments from the public? Go right ahead.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Hi, um, Naomi Fuller, thirty-four Glen Echo Shore Road, I am a client of my cats on a six, thirty-eight month a week. Um, so I am there multiple times a week during nothing drop-off, which is like the craziest time. That's when they're being turned over, the most hard, and dogs are going in and out. I have never seen a backup on the street, at most I have seen cars that fit into the little driveway, so I've never seen the street get completely stopped. Um, or even heavy traffic during their heaviest time, I have never, ever seen the dogs become uncontrollable, chaotic. I have never seen more than two minutes of barking, and like I said, it is not chaotic barking, it is basically one dog here and there, I hear more dogs bark in my neighborhood. It's not kind of, um, you hear dogs in the neighborhood, because they're outside, or not trainers like Anthony does, I hear more in my neighborhood. Um, I hear more propane languages in our neighborhood, with people yelling at their children than I have ever heard from. Um, so, I just want to say that in my experience, which again, over six months, multiple times a week during those chaotic times, um, I have never seen anything less than professional control, I have never heard, I have never even seen dogs on the other side of the fence, cleaning out with people. Um, Anthony is professional, he's great at what he does, I have full, I mean, animal control has full knowledge that he can handle it, because he passed his licensing twice, so the subject matter expert has full confidence and capabilities, which is really important matters here, um.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, William, sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Um, so, lucky enough that I'm far enough out of earshot that I can't speak to the, the barking or anything like that. Um, one thing that was brought up last time, and I just definitely wanted to make mention again today, is property values. Um, I've grown up living in Charlton my whole life, bought a home, seven minutes down the road from my parents who live in, uh, on Pontiac Hill, with every intention of, you know, making it a lifelong home, in a nice, quiet residential area. Now, I see concerns about that, that, you know, I see the issues burning in the neighborhood. I have concerns about property value now, whether my house is gonna retain the value or not, whether the neighborhood's gonna retain the value and the status that it, that it has. Um, and that's one thing that I haven't really heard addressed or, or anything of that nature, it's a residential neighborhood. And now we're talking about putting businesses that have noise pollution, some, I can't speak to it, but the alleged noise pollution. The question that came up last time that is sort of what I stick with and why I struggle with it is, why not in a business district? Why not on Route twenty where the other doggy daycares are? Why not in a commercial zone where there is no issue and you're not butting heads with your neighbors? It's like to the point of, you know, we're mugging concerns and all that, no one wants to do that. So, and I know there was mention of the petition, I believe, uh, I don't know if you have a copy, but I know, you know, the, the neighborhood rallies for him as a neighbor, but is pretty against this business. Um, so that's just another thing that I think really needs to be con- considered, um, not to, I'm sure he's great with clients, but they don't live there. So, they, you know, it's an awesome service, it's great that they can come in and do that, but it's affecting us that live there, and I have concerns that it's gonna affect me financially, uh, you know, I'm starting to think, should I stay here? Do I need to set, like, that's the sort of thing that's starting to disrupt my life.
Yeah, all right, thank you very much, anyway, sir, go right ahead.
Brendan King, uh, thirty Glen Echo Shore Road, so licensed real estate broker, I don't live in your neighborhood, licensed real estate broker, Massachusetts, Connecticut. There's never been a proven study that dog kennels of his size actually affect property values, so most likely, that shouldn't be an issue, so. Noise, the business has put in proper controls, they have noise monitoring at each of their property lines, keeping it below sixty decibels. I've gone through multiple planning boards, if he's below the threshold at the other properties, he will know if there's noise. He's controlling it, if it's not dogs barking, it could be a kid crying, he would still know their lab, he can go out and control the noise. So he can control the noise, property values can be monitored, as long as he has the proper controls to keep his business appropriate, he's not making architectural changes in the property, not changing the site plan, it should be sufficient to operate the business as is per the animal control officer. That's all.
Thank you very much, any other comment or question, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Gabor Mepeski, seventy-seven Little Mugget Road.
Yeah.
Uh, so the dogs start barking, um, right around seven o'clock. And, um, and it just keep, you know, every few minutes you'll hear a bark or a yell, sometimes it's multi- multiple dogs, sometimes it's single dogs. Um, and it continues throughout the day, um, so.
Hence the laws that we created.
Yeah.
We took time out of our lives to.
At, at some point, it became very frustrating for us, because I'm like, I'm sitting around here, listening for dogs, I'm trying to do other things, and, and I, and the things that I'm trying to do, I'm, I'm right on, I'm trying to, um, I'm working on a, a story, and, and every few minutes I hear a dog bark. Now, I closed the windows, double pane windows, and I can still hear the dogs a hundred yards away. So the dogs are facing us, and it's sort of like shoving across the mountain now, just, you hear it, you know? Doesn't matter what kind of mitigation is in place, the dogs keep barking all day long, every day. We've been very nice about this, because it was going to, the business was supposed to be shut down. We're also nice because, um, you know, it's under, it was under litigation, so we're waiting on that. But, I mean, if this is approved, then, I, I mean, I don't know what, what are, what we can do after that. I mean, we have to start complaining every day, is that what's going to happen? I, I need to know this, because.
That's probably a lot.
Yeah, it's just dogs barking.
And when we had a petition signed by most of the neighbors in the area, none of us wanted it, if I'm correct.
Nobody wants it, we, it's a great idea, doggy daycare, awesome idea, wrong location. And, and just to speak to the point, uh, where you were saying that, you know, sometimes it's a person problem, you know, it's not the dog. This time it's a person problem as well, because you just don't understand.
No, wait, we're not gonna do personal attacks.
Okay, all right. I apologize.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brendan, Glen Echo Shore Road again.
Yeah.
He has noise monitors, and he has the levels of the sound throughout the day. If the sound goes above that level, and there's a report, the animal control officer can corroborate it, count it as valid, issue of five. Those are the bylaws of the town of Charlton. Now, if the sound is not above the decimal level,
Yeah.
there's no issue, per the town, that is the town bylaws. If they're hearing dogs with below that level, per the town, that's not an issue. That's all.
I guess, all right, I'd call it, okay, go right.
Randy Eldorff.
We got, we, if they've spent that many times and it's bothered them. How many times do you call the dog officer and play by it?
Our emails are the ones that they're running.
Yeah, we have emails.
May I comment, may I comment?
Wait, we got, hold up, we got one more, someone had asked, it was just a statement.
Yeah.
It was Jennifer's iPhone says, while I sympathize with the man who is being treated for cancer, the pain language happens everywhere, I live in a residential neighborhood, and children scream and yell in the middle of schools, schools, and middle school swear, this is not illegal, I just wanted to read that for the record, go right ahead.
Okay, um, so, um, to play the devil's advocate, um, the applicant didn't reach out to the neighbors either when he tried to start his business. He just went ahead and did it.
Just to be clear, per the zoning bylaw, he's allowed to in the zone, it's an allowed use through this board issues the permit.
I understand, but as a good neighbor, if he wanted to, you know, to have a business, he should have approached his neighbors. They probably would have guided on, but this was a bad idea. It might be a good idea in, you know, elsewhere. I mean, if the business district was ideal for this, anywhere else in town, I mean.
There's two of us that want to speak. Yeah, I haven't seen, I, I was able to see that in the peripheral vision. Let's go right ahead.
A couple of things that I think were brought up that aren't necessarily things that we should take too much into consideration. One being the risk assumed when the trial permit was given. Understand that there's a risk to the business now that just started during the trial permit, but it was always the understanding that that trial permit was on trial. Um, that was a known, um, agreement that was going into, so I don't know how much weight we should put on that as that piece of the argument. The other thing is current state is one thing. Best intentions, plans are also one thing. But considering the full allowance of the permit and what's going to be governance and what is going to be, um. Why, what's going to be recourse after the full consent of the permit is allowed is a completely different story. So we're talking a lot about current state and what's going on right now with us playing forward, you had to handle it forward. And we're also talking about incidents that have happened that have slipped through those cracks. I can only imagine that when the amounts are increased to the levels. And there isn't a trial period that's being actively monitored by the neighborhood. That there really isn't much report more than what we can do right now. That's a concern. Um, I think one of the concerns is noise, but there were others. There is also, yes, a property value concern. And I understand that there's no Housen studies or, you know, there's no fact to kind of back that up. However. Market is pickled. And market may be a little bit different than Housen studies. Um, and I, I'm not questioning anybody's capabilities, but I'm just stating facts of it. Doesn't really give me a lot of work for permits. Market is very difficult. We've seen the housing market as it flow and go up and down. And I've looked at my property for over eighteen years and are just finally feeling that, oh, great. I had to ride out a couple of housing market crashes and had to wait this long to be able to actually pull anything out of the equity to make some upgrades on my house. So this is a long-term investment that we're protecting as well. Holding in the stands of demands, um, for a good business and the need for the public. That's why there are a few more a lot of the ones. It's not a question about what the public needs or whether or not it's a great business model or a great business. It's a question about the location of them. That's really what it boils down to. And it's nobody's questioning the capabilities or the expertise that you have. Um, and we said that last time as well. For the need for the public, are those other doggy daycares at full capacity? Is there more room there? They're not that far away. So I can't really say that for sure without the doggy daycare and the public asking that. We did express, you mentioned how you haven't really been hearing a lot of the complaints or concerns. And not getting a call. Two things about that. We've already talked about where we were directed in order to make those earnings. But when we were here at that last meeting, we heard a lot of our friends in person. And we expressed a lot of our issues that I mentioned. So it's not that you haven't been notified even directly personally. We all expressed that we didn't feel comfortable constantly having to follow or go over and we didn't want to know that I had more. In person for last meeting. As far as continuing after the appeal. Was there required notification to vote to be loaded that this was in the appeal process and that that expectation was calling every time? We have a complaint was to continue because I didn't receive one. And after having already expressed that I didn't feel comfortable calling, when the trial period was over, my obligation was over. I didn't feel comfortable calling every time they would visit the building or there was a. The one time I did, however, was when there was a dog in our front yard, ten o'clock at night that came from that front. That was the time that I called. I didn't realize it came from the property at the time that it was in my front yard. I was more concerned about the dog at night and gone out because he broke some people rather than think everybody knows how being. Whatever the circumstances were of how that dog got loose or how it got back in. Not really the concern. The concern is that it's happened once and I'm sure it's happened after things happen once in a while, but it can happen again. That really, pretty much everything that I was thinking also just during the meeting. On top of all of the things that we discussed during the last one, I don't think any of those concerns have been. Rigated, I don't think any of those concerns. By not only the original trial period, but even the time since then.
Yep, so my name is Bill French and then Stephanie Angel of Mother Road. I live like on our side of the room. The house has two hundred feet of footage. The house is four hundred feet. There's property on it. So I also just wanted to ask a comment. Is it my understanding that Town of Charleston follows the. Panel and all of that. Chapter one forty. Section one seventy one. I don't know if that's a question for you or not.
Yeah, I, I've not reviewed that issue. I represent the town in the planning board. So if they want me to look into an issue, I'm happy to do that.
I can give you this when I leave.
Okay, no problem. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Anyhow, there's a section here that's similar to what the majority of us are talking about. And really it's about the noise level. Also, I just want to go back to January sixth. When we were here together. And some of the, some less people here, but the majority of the people that were here, we talked about. The property value, but also the noise level. We were concerned that in the winter time, the noise wasn't as much as the dogs. It's winter time, the dogs want to be out. I lived at this property for twenty-two years. I remember your father and your grandmother. I remember some dogs out there. Never walked like the dogs I'm hearing down the street from me. Okay? I'm not one to call, but I have been calling because as of recently, it's been out of control. It's been my understanding from the past meeting. That. You're not home all the time. You got other people there. So I believe maybe when you're there that things maybe kind of go right, maybe not. I don't know. The other thing I'll say about the last meeting we're here, the selectmen. Mentioned in the meeting here. And this has to do with what Kevin said and his wife said a minute, a couple minutes ago on the phone about she's not going to go across the street. It was stated in this meeting about how he was somewhat aggressive. No way I'm going to go to that man's front door after what I saw here on January sixth, okay? But just getting back to the dogs and when I, there are other dogs, I think are over on maybe Senator DeBorero.
Yeah, how far away from this property are they? It's a few houses, I think that they.
But when I hear the dogs barking, I know it's from his house and the reason I know it's from his house is it's multiple dogs. It's not one dog or two dogs. It's multiple dogs, like a pack of dogs. The one day that you're mentioning. Maybe the end of June, I started to walk over there. It was, it was more than ten minutes. And I had my phone out. I was gonna. Videotape it because it was out of control. And all I know is. Someone mentioned about property value. I'm not in real estate or whatever, but I guarantee you this, if I drove, was out looking for a home, I'd go buy a house where I swore. A kennel or a bunch of dogs hanging out. That's going to be a negative for me and probably the majority of people who are shopping for a home. Our neighborhood has been residential with no business, quiet and all that. That's all changed. Especially over the last couple of months. And so. I just think it's. Not right. We, we just let people vote it on this on January sixth. The majority of them said no. The major, all of the people that we hear on January sixth and I believe today. Who live in the neighborhood and don't visit just neighborhoods. It's totally, you know, a big difference for people who don't live every day. I'm retired for four years. So over the last couple of months, when the weather's been decent, I'm hearing dogs all the time.
Thank you very much. One last one and then we got, because we're under the gun, we got multiple people after you guys.
My last, go right ahead, Chair, to Attorney McKay. If you're looking at Mass General Law, it also says the animal control officer is the ultimate authority on kennel licenses and their controls. If we want to use Mass General Law.
Yeah, that's the stage right here.
Yep, so there's that for the board if you want to use that.
Just solicit it.
Only because we've gone over an hour. We have other agenda items to get to tonight.
We, can we, um. Postpone this one?
I'd like to make a motion to continue.
While we have the attorneys here, I don't know if they want to return to the next meeting. The attorneys or do you ever make a deal, let go tonight? They've, they've always. Wants to continue the application.
Right, and if the board would like me here, I'll be here.
Thank you. Alright, do we have more to continue the meeting to, uh, we check with the. Yeah, is anyone on Zoom that has a question or comment before we continue this public hearing to another date next month?
I just wanted to clarify what I said about what the person responded to me. About the language, I get it. I teach in middle school in Worcester. I get it. It was just that one day. However, my. Biggest concern is if that's what you're saying, how much control over the dogs? Do you, you know, and I'm not trying to play a pity party that my husband has cancer, but there are days he comes home from treatment. And can't sleep because of that. I mean, it's not all the time. And that, that's really all I want to clarify is because I'm worried about all these things that everybody's saying, living directly across with a big fence and. You know, it's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alright, do we have more to continue this through August ninth at seven forty?
I'll second. All those in favor, if you'd like to just discuss a little bit. I, I feel kind of bad about all these people are taking time out of their, their, their busy schedule to come here and voice their complaints. And ask if they're going to come back and do it again, but I understand we are pressed for time and, and there are other things that we need to take care of tonight. We could be here till eleven.
Yeah, but I want to get animal control as well.
And there's other things that we need to discuss with it too. So we will be continuing it. So I think. If you've got other questions or, or other issues. Send one to the board, come back in, in the beyond and make sure that they understand we're not cutting them off and discarding anything. It's just. It's a pursuit of beating out.
All those in favor. Thank you for coming on. Alright, next up, we have. Edward Services. Yeah, thank you. You guys.
Thank you, Mr. McKay.
You're sticking around where you.
I wasn't going to. Was there anything else that we needed? To, to speak with any other seizure things concerning some of the other legal.
So we got a public hearing continued for Edward Services, site plan application at sixteen St. Ridge Road. If anyone here for that public hearing. Yeah, I don't think so, but e- either way, um, we still need something from Grace. They don't review it, have they?
Grace, as you did, we see the plans on Monday.
Okay. Alright, and no one's here to do a presentation because I think from the original, they've done some modifications for the layout of the property as far as with the building. And the kennel is going to be. So just since the, since the representative, I'd like to give a motion to continue this public hearing.
August, are we pulling up there for the middle of September?
August ninth at eight o'clock.
I'll make a motion to continue this August night. For the Edward Service application.
Yep, second. All those in favor. Alright, next up, public hearing continued from Ruby Valley Government Company, LLC, special foundation application to construct an energy storage system. Three twenty-five, which is a hundred and twenty quarter way. Thirty-seven A. Dash four, second filing.
Yeah, I mean, the last question. I can figure that it makes a determination on. This email from you. In here.
Date of July third.
I got it here.
Effects on our structures in this case and therefore not subject to the setback requirement.
I thought we were going to continue this one anyways.
Is this all we're waiting for? We closed the public hearing already.
There's an obscure little thing called the performance standard that requires the board of selectmen to. Issue a permit for anything that is hazardous and highly flammable.
Okay. Have we ever done that before?
Performance data two hundred, uh, four dot one.
The regular general. But I'm only responsible for more than zoning bylaws, not the general, so it's out of our hands.
Okay.
If there is something they need from board, like we said, we approve the car dealer. We need to prove the car deal. The owners on the app.
They were aware of that, actually.
I thought it was something good to know. What was the number again?
Two hundred dot four dot one in our bylaws.
So what was left to do one? The one here for quarter way.
Basically for the planning board to vote. They have to. Layers planned and this. Some minor. Meant for number three. Because they were minor that my, uh, the option was waiting. Seem to date the answer was going to come up. So the condition that they, you would have to just say if my hand raised at the record.
Telling me that the ZP items and the concrete items were going to be. I, I did.
I messed that up. In general, has there been anyone out there in any public hearings?
Yeah, there hasn't. Okay. So I, 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 that was my only concern is that we did advertise that it was going to be, but. That said, the public hearing is. So I don't, the, the public hearing is closed. So I don't know. So that kind of happened today. I don't know, so that kind of happened today, what do you guys feel? I, I it, it was, it was noticed
Cause I was thinking about Larry's way.
Was the, was the hearing closed on, on June seventh? I wasn't here personally.
I.
For the record, come forward here by development.
Porter Way.
We're talking about Porter Way now, I, I thought we were talking about, right?
Oh, yes, Larry's is continued.
Larry's, yeah.
Okay, that's, that was never on the agenda to begin with, this is what was on the agenda for, so I'm just, I'm just concerned that.
We don't want to misinform.
That's, that's all I'm saying is, 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 uh, I, I hate to have an open meeting violation.
I don't blame you.
That we, that we yeah, so how can we remedy that? Um, the only, I'm, it, it looks like just continue it until the next meeting.
Yeah.
And post it and, and post it and, cause I, I
Yeah, no, I hear you.
I, I apologize for that.
I want to raise the flag, I hate those.
Okay, yeah.
But you're saying, when you did it on
Cause I, I, cause I, I was on the interpretation. When I had had messaged him earlier.
He's a, could you?
I thought, I thought it was the Larry's Way that was on the agenda, as opposed to the Porter's Way. Because they have more, because you guys have some more.
Hey, yeah, no, and I'm, I'm fine with whatever you guys decide, honestly, that's, I don't want to, it's fine.
I have to say, Larry's Way will be on the next agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but this is, this is just a quick agenda item on the next one.
Yeah.
So if you're fine with it, Tom, I apologize, it's actual.
August ninth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're all ready to vote on it, it's just, I think.
Understood.
Yeah.
So on the new seven, was the meeting closed or the hearing closed?
Yeah.
I don't know, I wasn't here, so.
Here was closed for using Porter Way.
Okay.
And it was just a matter of determining, the final determination was did the fence need to meet the setback? Right there, you know, sure. Maybe during this case, depends if not need to meet that.
Was the
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't, I wasn't aware that.
Public hearing was closed.
That just slipped my mind.
It was closed.
Yeah, dude, I have you.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion to continue the DP Valley Development Special Permit Application for Porter's Way, at three twenty-five West Road.
Promote.
Okay. I have a question.
Go right ahead.
If it's, the public hearing was closed, why is it back on our agenda?
Cause we just had one item out there as far as a question on the fence before we voted.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
But it's, but it was still advertised as a public hearing, so, yeah, that's probably
Just to cover.
Probably shouldn't be next time, because it really isn't a public hearing.
Just vote on.
Well, uh, yeah, in the agenda, in the posted agenda, take public hearing after this
Yeah.
particular Porter Way one, because it isn't, isn't a public hearing.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 One thing before I leave, I brought my wires for the other two subdivisions.
Yeah.
Jane has them, if possible, before you guys leave tonight. The approved subdivisions.
Yeah.
What, they need signatures?
The my wires.
They need signatures?
Yeah.
For what?
For the approved subdivision plans.
Which one?
The prior Porter's Way and Larry's.
Wait, why were you?
We've, we've already.
Oh.
It's, it's the final plan for you guys to sign on a miler.
Okay.
Yes, one favor for Larry's Way, they've now have submitted, um, or in, in middle of submitting, yeah, a revised subdivision, but they want to keep such as what was done with White Development on Smith Road.
Oh, but that's wrong to begin with.
Huh?
I'm sorry, I don't agree with it.
Having two subdivision.
Absolutely. I'm not, I'm just, I don't want to do it again.
You can have as many subdivision plans, so, but landowner can has as many as they want, but they can't execute all of them.
It's, it's just, you know, when it comes time to build, they have to extend everything except for the land they're actually gonna use for the structure.
Yeah.
Yes, it makes it more.
It's, it's, it's essentially just, you know, it's essentially the same process to modify it, it's just cleaner to do it as a new application.
Oh, we're talking about new application?
Okay.
Whatever.
Alright, thanks, Tom.
See you guys on the night.
Alright. Next up, public hearing, Dolphin's Concrete Site Plan Application, one forty-six West Road, the app has requested to be continued through August ninth.
We do have, um, the, the intent, we do have the information that we will
Be ready.
Here the public hearing, continue the public hearing on August ninth.
Alright.
We have the equation we need now, but we'll
Okay.
Discuss it publicly here.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to continue the Dolphins' application to August ninth, I agree.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright, we got some A and Rs, we got first off is East End LLC, Stephen and Steve.
Yeah.
LLC.
I asked, in comparison to the app, I had signed it, but we need the planning board to ratify it, I signed the my wire, so
Okay.
We filed with registry, however, um, the board needs to ratify it, so I do, like, before it's time to kick, talk people. Instead of usually getting this lot, they're going to be combining it with this lot over here.
Parcel B, alright, the purpose of the plan is to create parcel eight and nine.
Yeah.
This parcel A, it is possibly, right?
Yeah, so they create new you want, especially. For that property.
Do you have a motion to, to, to approve the A and R? For East End LLC on L Stephen.
We, we, we reviewed this once before, I should just be familiar.
Okay.
From L Stephen, just, you have the, part of the grand plan. So it might have been shown as informally on the previous plan, but.
Make motion to approve the East End LLC A and R. Just a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright. That's right.
Oh, yeah.
I did, when you started talking about it, I was like, wait, would, but, but, this is the one I saw on the agenda, so that was the one.
Yeah.
I was like, I thought we were gonna write that one. I, I, yeah.
No, you were working in Texas at the same time?
Yep.
Yeah. Heat.
Yep. The heat got to.
Next up for A and R, we have Green Hill Realty Trust, that two forty-one Sternwood Road.
Yeah, this application is, uh, on the land that was for previously approved, uh, what the app is proposing to do is they have a corner up here, this land that was controlled with, um, it was previously owned or should be owned by the study church and doing property with straddles to town line, they have basically breaking off this area over here and giving it to this property, giving, selling, but transferring that property to that, so this previous two hundred and some odd acres and now it's reduced to one ninety-five, which is a very large tract of land, but that's where the change is gonna be, it's this portion of property back here, it's going to be transferred to the, uh, church property.
Alright.
We already approved that other plan for this, does that affect it in any way?
No, this is part of the rear of the property, they weren't even doing it.
Yeah.
It'll be a portion of the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like turning the palm.
Something that was gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this major hill on it, or?
Uh, yeah, Hill Road right here.
And that's. Major, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like, and you know, the pond here, it's like over here, and then, you know, where they composed all of the development was over here, so it's actually far away from where the progress development is.
So, okay, so it's not gonna affect what we already approved?
No.
Okay.
Reduces the land, but I mean, it's still well in excess of what it needs to be, so.
Make motion to approve the A and R for two forty-one St. Ridge Road.
Okay, all those in favor?
I, I, I.
Aye.
Yeah.
Yeah. What you learned?
Yeah.
With the, it's just, it was, yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, great, now they're dealing with Matthew, he's searching to destroy these probably active stuff that, but some sort of my dates, is that playing? You want to die, please not to, when I go fight.
I'm believing.
Fight plane?
I watched. People walking that road with backpacks, I mean, like, this is just.
That's, that's one of the new day, they're doing it on that portion of their, down to, and turning down towards.
Okay. I don't even think it's own. Still perfect. Alright, next up, we got KLSP Potter Village Road, IRR Trust, Lelandville Road.
Oh, actually, that's been discussed, I posted that on twenty.
It's IG?
I think it's.
What? Then that's close now.
Yeah. Could see that far away.
Like they had a rule.
Yeah.
Are you still signing?
I'll sign.
I'll sign, good, there you go.
We didn't date it, no.
No.
Next one, the app is, uh, proposed to creating four lots on, um, the. That they want to create by this, to be more than that. Is to cut an application, it's very, for individual lot, they're all well, well, three new lot. And, uh, we just do lot one here, you know, we two, three and four, and then the balance of the uh, larger tract of land.
And we'll set one.
And the rest is lot one, I should, that goes around all of them.
Right, there is, there is one more, if you look at the, uh, let me see, one more parcel over here. This parcel is actually being cut off from the previous A and R down here.
To all the eight.
It was, it was, yeah.
Crossed and.
All of it is. Um, with the bounds of the land is, uh, the large tract, this remaining land.
I take a motion to approve the A and R for Potter Village Road. IRR, we were, you're right.
Second? Their second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm home now.
Aye. Aye.
Oh. This one here, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I love that.
It's an A and R, but we have something else coming up on this, or?
Coming to planning?
Yeah.
I think hate to building, well, the, the, there's a separate issue with the I guess the buyer, the property that contacted us yesterday at the bought a house, should be built for the property, it's gonna be ready in September.
Oh.
I said, well, a lot doesn't need it, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It could have a modular, well, no.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's why they're here, to break off that lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry. Didn't we?
Alright, no problem.
Hang in there.
Yeah.
Strips here. Do you want some candy? I'm all set with it.
That's why I'm cranked up, what do you?
No.
Want to give you that anymore.
Leave that up to Gene. Have you written the wrong date before? Don't want to miss that. In the mind box. Five, second. Alright, next up, we got KLSP Potter Village, IRR Trust, Potter Village Crossway.
Potter Village, not North, Potter Village Road.
Okay, just straight across, sorry, I'm just reading off the.
Yeah.
Either pass reading off the plan.
Yeah.
I don't want to read something like that. It was, it's, oh.
It says classroom up there, but it doesn't say classroom down there.
Is that fine? Is that fine, have a road mislabeled?
But front is on lean.
Okay. So I could pick by, but, okay, the only thing is, is this remaining property is, is still on Potter Village. I'm just
It's clear here.
Yes.
That, the, uh.
We have the same, this, that. Bill is, the other one, Potter's still, crossing though. One road turns into another, but.
Right?
Really, uh, forming lots, uh, there's a small there'll be a non-ponding lots is eventually going to be attached to this property back here, we're just, you know, to everyone, you just may get your temper special partner produce one slot. And then this small portion of land over here is actually eventually going to be tied to that prop, transferred to that property.
This distance from a road to there is a little bit five hundred feet?
On this day, I think what, what we've said one minute, at that point.
Good, good. This could be a problem. Yeah.
They can divide for the A and R.
They could, they may not be able to.
It'll meet it, it's fine, it'll meet the bylaw, okay, it'll come forth.
We, we made sure, okay, that's why it's done that way.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Very exact, hundred seventy six feet of front, which I had that.
All right, we have a motion to approve the A and R.
You guys have that there?
Yeah.
Uh, make a motion to approve the A and R for Potter Village Road. K L S P Potter Village Road, here vocal trust, second that.
All those in favor?
I.
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 I mean, that's all this.
You can blame my mother for that long name.
That could be, that's, that's how I should have spelled out.
Louise Smith, her maiden name was Bronya. Bronya, my mother was a Bronya. Whole tribe of them.
Oh geez.
One production. All the summer in road, yeah. It's been a whole outfit.
So you're Mr. Smith?
I am Mr. Smith, I'm the last of the Mohegan's.
Name like Smith.
You're just one of them.
So it's up to me now. Finally, we're gonna try to keep some of this apart, what we're gonna do, that's the objective. I gotta let it all go.
Good luck. Thanks for waiting, thank you, sorry, it's always nice, thank you, good night.
Yeah.
Well, those, if he's with you, yeah, I'll take him.
You only getting. Okay.
And George Smith was the surveyor, no relation.
No relation, no relation, I wish he was.
Yeah. Wow, the engineer. That would've been nice.
Next up, we got the Vincent reduced front of lot, special permit, annual approval extension request on Casey Road, we can do approve that extension to. July twenty second, twenty twenty four. We have a motion to approve that.
Sounds good, I'll make my move until July twenty twenty four. Twenty seconds.
July twenty second, July twenty second.
July twenty second. Twenty year, one twenty four.
Yep, all those in favor?
I.
I'm staying.
I. All right.
All right. All right. Next up, we have R A White Development Company Corp, Tucker Pharma State Subdivision, Annual Approval Extension Request Office Smith Road, looking to. Prove to seven fourteen twenty four.
Okay, there.
I know you're on the record right now, right?
Yes.
On the record.
Yes.
I was gonna give you a little background, okay, my father was a Smith, okay, his mother was Sylvia Smith. From the Smith farm on Smith Road.
There you go.
We are, okay? We come all the way back from that road, that road, that farm is gone. Yeah, stupidest thing we ever did. I'm ashamed and not gonna let that happen again, okay?
Have a good one.
I'll let those fits down.
That's right. All right, they're looking to approve their subdivision.
Annual approval extension request off of Smith Road.
There you go.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the extension request. Oh, I have a question, just when you were talking, and.
Yeah.
What? Have they been actively building here, or?
No, they haven't, remember they have to do a plan from somebody who's frontage lots, and the other alternative is, is done, yeah, so they haven't, they haven't, yeah.
Decided what they're gonna do.
Have not, or they haven't had a customer yet, they just wanna buy a single lot.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
The one with the road moving behind it.
Exactly, yes.
I second, just a question.
All right, all those in favor?
I.
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 I'm staying. All right, next up, we have Kazowski Land Pharma State Subdivision, approval extension request off of Brookfield Road, looking to go to July twentieth, twenty twenty four. That is an active subdivision. Um.
The ground is very active over there.
Yes.
Moving.
Yeah. As far as like, I think they, they both, they, they at least will build houses last year.
Oh, they built a house.
That's what I mean, yeah.
We got recent rain and everything, there's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Slopes there.
Oh, and then this farm?
No, oh, I thought you were in the next.
Oh, no, yes, yeah, yeah, correct, yeah, oh.
I'm, I'm not surprised, that's the big slopes there, that was, yeah, that's, that's scary, um. I'll make a motion to approve the extension to seven twenty 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 four, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, seven twenty twenty four. For Lynn's Pharma State Subdivision, now, we talked to them a few years ago about making sure that their engineering was up today. Same question.
Yeah, yeah.
My second.
All those in favor?
I, I.
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 I. All right, next up, J Jill Development LLC Rockaway Realty Trust, a bit of subdivision, annual extension request off of City Depot Road, looking to extend to eight twenty three twenty four.
And that's an active construction site too, so.
Yes.
Angela must be having a field day there. What's that? Angela must be having a field day there, no? Oh, yeah.
Angela's last stage.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Is this what pushed her out, or?
I think this one's sort of moving too, isn't it?
So, what's that, for her, seven minutes from now?
Yeah. That's what we were talking about, yeah.
So, okay. For many reasons, she worked close to the home and everything. You can be hard to replace, so.
Where is she from?
Oh. I'll make a motion to approve the J Jill LLC Rockaway Realty Trust, Defender. Subdivision, extension to six twenty three twenty four.
Eight twenty three.
Eight twenty three.
Second. All those in favor?
I.
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 I. I. All right, next up, we got some minutes.
Uh, you get one?
They, who they, they.
Just May third?
With your. I vision of friend. We didn't get any. I'm just saying with Amber.
I think you're mine. I'm already rather. Making. Okay, my mistake.
Oh, you don't have a gene?
Yeah, I did, um.
Really have a question about, not about the minutes, but I should probably not introduce this to you. And CBS is moving up and pick up, move someplace else. You, you cannot share commercial wildlife. Well, it's on the agenda for next, next week.
Next week or next month?
Next one.
Everything.
Oh, it's, it's on the agenda. Take it better to wait till that.
Yeah.
I thought you said once on the.
No, no, it really goes on this week, because I asked you to. Long meeting. Make a motion to approve the minutes for May third twenty twenty three.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I.
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 I. All right.
Next up, um, what is it, the very brief meeting that we had on Tuesday, when the answer came up was the. Appointment for alternacy?
Alicia has, she had verbally told the, told that she would resigning for the board, but we accidentally received anything in writing for the last week. So, in essence, John brought it up incorrectly, so that, um, things got, even though it was advertised and everything. Technically, you're supposed to get the, uh, statement writing, the summary to resign from the board before you advertise. For position to replace that person.
So, was it advertised, where was it advertised?
Yeah, but now it's been re-advertised. Since it's out on the board.
Oh.
Repoaching the position.
Okay.
Okay.
For.
When's the deadline?
Interesting. Good, okay, did it, is it on the, is it on the planning board website, is it, um, you know, giving news out on social media, it's just, my, my only objection was, was it seemed. It seems like we had a candidate before we even had a resignation.
Yeah.
In fact, it was just done last night in the selectmen's board and approved, so, anything that was done before our meeting tonight. Seemed premature for what we were doing, and I'm just trying to keep. Everything above board and obvious, and not make it look like it's, it's a. I mean, no, it's. Something in without anybody knowing about it, and I just wanna keep everything publicly and, and, yeah, get the word out there that the, the position's open and, and. I don't have access to social media.
I can put on the. Cause I'll, I'll read this, just for the public to hear, uh, there is one opening for an associate planning board member, the chairman of the planning board may designate the associate member to sit on the board for the purpose of. Acting on a special permit application in the case of absence, inability to act or conflict of interest on the part of any member. Of the planning board in the event of a vacancy on the board, interested candidate should submit letter of interest or talent bank form to marydublin@mary.dublin@talentchopper.net by July twenty third, twenty twenty three, and this was posted on July ten.
Okay. So just on Monday, the board's life man has now chosen to interview potential members, so. The board has go to the meeting last night, a joint meeting with the planning board, but because of the way it was handled. Um, they put off that joint meeting and will have a day to view with. Any interested candidates all on one night, but join me with the planning board so that both boardists like them and planning board will be able to ask any. Advocates, any questions they want to start the interview process.
Well.
That was, the select board last night talked about that, they were talking, I, I didn't think that was the boat.
No, it didn't happen, because, um.
Okay.
We tabled.
Of, of everything, the way it was handled, so that they, you know, they, they decided not to do anything and wait for the. Then would discuss. Oh, they didn't do that with the. The appointee for the. What board was there before that?
Oh, not for to help.
Yeah, they voted on it, but they didn't, they didn't, yeah, they voted on it.
Well, she was there, though, they could ask her questions.
Now, are we gonna get to hit the candidates?
They did, yeah. Well, it's supposed to be done with the, the running viewer.
It's not supposed to be separate?
It always was separate, I, I don't agree with it, and I would like to see something in writing, if it's something that they changed, that they wanna do this, I think they're oversipping their boundaries a little bit.
I, I agree with that.
Yeah, especially because I had heard that they wanna do the same thing with elected people, they wanna interview them. Yeah.
I can understand for a, a big position, over an elected board, and it's an alternate for an elected board, did you have to meet with the?
No.
The select board?
No. It was joined up. Apply for it, and I think Alicia too.
I did it when I was.
Yeah, correct.
And.
There's another person that came to you, Bill, but, and you're the only one that showed up to the.
Oh, yes, I remember that, no, someone else didn't, they, yes, they were, they didn't show up to the interview.
And the only time you went to the board is to be. For.
Yeah.
Doesn't get involved, yeah.
You know, they do, the joint appointment, two boards appoint, planning board would usually interview the, the, the potential candidate.
I mean.
And then the, this, like this board, we have potential candidate, we would meet with the selectmen and say, this is our, our choice, we would like. And have a joint meeting and.
They can ratify it, they could always say no.
They could say no, but.
So that's what transpired with the. Help department.
No, they actually started, well. I think because they said that, um, Matt voted one way and John voted another way, which left a split vote.
Oh, no.
And I think maybe that's why they went to the board of selectmen and had them vote on.
Maybe that's why.
Tiebreaker.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a tiebreaker.
But Matt didn't. Matt said he did begrudgingly, but he approved on the lead on Kate, only because the other person did not come for a review, so.
The second interview.
Second interview, so Matt said, well.
They had the first interview, like last night was the second interview, and being chose not to show up.
Drama.
Never end.
So that's why I wanted to avoid, let's do this publicly.
Yeah, after all that.
We hadn't even, we hadn't even, yeah, but we had not even officially talked about it. Nothing against.
Nope, nothing. You guys signed both copies?
And now, when I heard that they were thinking about doing that, you know, like the position they have.
Other people always wait.
Yeah. I just, just for the record, for the alternate, good morning, like the former design is the open on the shop complaining board, I enjoyed my time immensely, I appreciate you allowing me to serve. As long as you have, foremost, regards, Alicia Jenner, and also I'd like to thank Alicia for her time.
The Sammer wing.
Very beneficial, her opinions and her.
They're great ideas.
Yeah, great ideas.
Great, great questions, yes.
Yeah, very good.
Very good.
Still on the E D C? There we go. Well, she was, but I don't know, I mean, she seems, her job seems to keep her very busy, I don't know. Job, kids usually do that.
So who's, is, does the plan still have a, a pointee on the EDC? Obviously, yeah.
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 Larry's way.
Back to EDC.
We are, we are.
EDC is now going to be doing, uh.
Be approved. We have, we have.
Interviews on, like, Easter comment on what they do and all that good stuff. So I was talking, I guess I have to do that.
Ten or fifteen minutes. And I think it's important, like, we're reflecting this out to a couple of other department, like, what do you do and what do you not do?
Like, I wanted, I asked Drew if he could have a model standard, you know?
Yeah, as a spokesperson. And Jane didn't agree to that?
Yeah.
Jane wanted no part of that, I'm sure.
Some people think, like, the EDC, oh, are you a bank? I can get some money from you, the economic development.
Yeah.
But no, we don't do that.
Hand down any brains?
Like, we did.
They did. Yes, they did.
Yeah.
Ray's son, he was very indebted to you.
Yeah. Always worked.
How about Hank?
Yeah.
Want to clarify this, aggressive, whole world innovation?
Oh, geez, here we go.
Pause, uh, pause. We were business.
I look forward to seeing your application.
It's not a business.
So, yeah, you need a new tracker.
That's right.
Right. Let your drink, I don't know, sir.
He's a good shot.
Yeah.
And the straw.
Does anyone have anything else?
Uh, anything else?
No. And the, the legal opinion?
Yeah.
For the next, next week, is that?
Yeah, the next meeting in August.
Yeah.
The only thing is, I, I just like to stress how I don't like how long we've had to wait for the legal opinion. The level of service then.
Yes.
Lacking, to put it politely. In the very form.
I, you know, and I.
We got.
It's tough tonight, sometimes I get, I don't know, I'm getting information, one lawyer is saying he's big to the other lawyer, the other lawyer, the first lawyer, and I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I've been harping on.
Yeah.
And I need to use, excuse the, okay, he was laid up, but still, he's not the only one.
Elijah, no firm.
Yeah.
That's where we go with a lot of.
Thought we could eliminate some of the trials, you know, larger firms.
To an advocate, no matter what the answer is to wait that long.
Yeah. And I think we're lucky that Tom from Zero Point was, I mean, he was very patient as far as his process was going for his opinion on his situation and then this most recent one.
So they got the opinion on Larry's way? Official, did we talk about that?
Oh, no, we have nothing, because they gave us some of that.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I, I haven't heard the official.
Oh, they determined, uh, it was determined by a counsel that the intent is for one battery on each law. Zero point is now, that's why they're coming back for the new subdivision. They're creating more laws, because zero and ten now, so not even Friday, they have put a battery in.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of.
Your power to buy laws.
Right. And it's still a special permit.
Yeah, it's still the same process. They say you put our bylaws, say five, maybe laws for a lot. That's what they have to do.
So they're gonna feed out three different.
Yes, so they're gonna break it out.
And have so many separate. Three separate.
Same ownership, but three separate.
With bunches of variants.
And they're all gonna be getting each one of the lots.
So. Right, so I, I guess maybe just, I mean, I don't, I hate hammering people. I just mentioned something to, uh, attorney, but they're like, hey, we just have noticed over these last couple of times we asked you for opinions, that the level of service has kind of lacked. Is there anything we can approve on that going forward? Because I don't want to say, hey, we gotta, we might have to go somewhere else.
Yeah, well, you know what the problem was?
No, we're not.
Problem started when Dave McKay hurt himself and he's being active. And then he passed it off to a partner who isn't so, you know.
Yeah.
Charlton's not there, like, one of the main clients, so we probably got pushed down on a list of things to do.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I like Dave, I like his demeanor, and I, and I respect, he does a good job. He's thorough with us when he explains stuff to us, so we can understand him as far as the, the common focus from the legal book.
Several times.
Yeah.
To sink in.
So we requested this shortly after the, the meeting we had on the tenth. So it's been.
Yeah.
Almost tomorrow, it'll be three months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Dolphine's application or the question was not being handled by Dave, was being handled by the partners who, like, go.
Now, you have that opinion now, or we're, we're expecting to get that? Can we talk about that? And I don't think I should.
I was told that we can't talk about it until the public meeting, appearance of the applicant being here and any interested party.
Said. Just to circle back on the attorney's responsiveness, I mean, maybe we tell them if it's just a determination, can you get this back to us before our next meeting, you know?
Yeah.
Like, that's our expectation.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I know the. Like, to.
Is there any reason?
The usual base, we're doing it right, but I didn't think it was that complicated.
I mean, maybe we.
That way.
Tell them that's kind of our expectation, if you could get to that before the next meeting, you know, that's. Or let us know that you can not do it or something.
It, it could be, it could be challenging for us, but it could be, we want to try not to get us in that position of something.
Right.
You know, maybe different tools we could use on maybe a special permit or this or limiting times or maybe look at what is in our tool bag to keep it at this level unless, and have it work out on this level.
Yeah.
Board needs to go to that level.
I still want to dig in a little bit deeper on how we got to the determination of allowed by right for that.
Yeah.
Because I think that, that was flawed.
Yeah.
I'm trying.
Um, so particularly talking about the, the concrete.
Oh. Oh, I'm.
So, I mean, that's, that's something we could, when we talk later about it. But maybe a more of a hash out or, or just communication with the other, with Kurt, who's, who's, that's what Isaac.
That's kind of what I.
Kurt, come in and what's your feeling there? And, and I know he's paying, he does a great job. He's got a lot, lot of knowledge.
But instead of a unilateral decision.
Yes.
Bring it to the board and say, this is what I'm feeling about this. This is my thoughts on it.
To be fair.
Why I'm making this.
To be fair to everybody.
Because then it's wronged us and we look like.
Wasted, but I shouldn't say wasted, but they're spending time and money. If it's gonna be a no, you need to see, you know, I need to see anybody spend time and money on something they can't do. So if there's a question, the tour and application is submitted.
Yep.
That we get the answers ironed out, everything, you know, so that an applicant isn't waiting or has to, like, spend all kinds of money to change your plan, like.
Or give, give some options, you know? To develop or, or something.
You can't do this, you couldn't ask.
Or maybe, yeah.
So. And it's. So not trying to, a way to figure it out to make it work, you know, versus, oh, we can improve this, but, you know, change it up, so, I mean.
Yeah, cause once.
But I, I think if you're, it's like, they go to, to be in the middle of the planning process.
Frustrating.
And then, you know, find out, you know, they gotta redo the plan.
Well, I mean, so to address the process, then, maybe anything that's not documented in the use table shouldn't be a determination from anyone other than this board. If it's not specifically documented.
But the thing is, is zoning enforcement office title has. It's the one that enforces that book to go by.
Yeah, I mean, and.
You can't just put it on.
But it is his, is it his, so it's his book to interpret?
Yeah, it is.
But he, yeah, I mean, right.
That's what you asked from, when he, like, was just saying, hey, I want to do a business on this site. What's your interpretation of the bylaw and how it reads?
But it was, it was the playing board that developed that bylaw.
Like, he's the one that enforces them.
But they understand.
We improved the application or not.
Yeah, correct. But he, but he does.
He enforces.
I mean, actually, the opinion for VGG, the one that's probably, you know, not, uh, under the, get litigation. One of the things the judge cited is the zoning off opinion that holds a lot of weight. You know, that, that he felt is, is zoning off the opinion on whatever part of that, that, you know, it's already been, it's already covered now, but like.
So, I mean, we.
That flipped a little bit, too.
Huh?
That flipped a little bit.
But we, we submit and we, we write these zoning laws on, uh, a, a way that we're thinking at a particular time. But, you know, we made them so detailed that we covered every aspect of every possible thing out there. You can't do it. Um, so, I mean, when we look at something, we say, okay, this, this, this type of business would fit in this, but if we pick every type of, in fact, that's why we pull things out of our, our, so that we wouldn't get pigeonholed into something that, that is just on the list. And unfortunately, it, it, it becomes a judgment thing, but it should include the playing board on that judgment also. Because what are we elected for? Then you could just be an administrator, stamps documents.
No, I mean.
Decisions are.
But the board hears applicants, the permits if the neighborhood fits. Like, early on today. If the, if they, if the use fits, the traffic.
But we, no, we don't hear if the use fits, because that's already determined by him, with that use fits.
Or the book does.
Right.
His interpretation or, or the interpretation of the books, the way that they're, the laws, they're written, but they're written in a way that, that favors some obscurtness so that you don't get pigeonholed into just some directness. So there is some, but, but what I'm saying is that determination has to be a team, not a single person. It, it should include local planning board and the, and the zoning board.
Join them, work together, so you don't, so you don't have an applicant dump a bunch of money and come to this force and you can't do it.
And we dump a bunch of money into a lawyer.
You know, if it takes, if it takes, uh.
Nothing against days.
No, right, yeah.
Nothing against, but.
If it, if it takes a bylaw change or, you know, a, a visit with a select board and it's, it, it might be something that we, we need to look at.
Well, that, that's the other thing, too, you made a perfect example that, um, like, sometimes, well, it's, it's not that we don't like what it is, but it's gonna require a bylaw change, like what we did for the Amazon building or even two forty-one. You know, the building, I just wasn't enough for that bylaw, so fix the bylaws and then they come with a clean application, you know? So if we know what they're doing upfront, you know?
But I, if it's well documented in the use table.
Yeah.
Then it's pretty clear and no problem, but if it's like, if this is, well, this a church or a hospital or a school, what is this thing? You know, is there any question?
Don't, right, you just can't, that's what we. Every single, no. I mean, you think, yeah, just about everything covering stuff don't come to you, keep every thought, you know, so.
Before cell towers.
No, right.
For cell tower applications.
Right.
You know, you're wondering what?
Yeah, right.
And there was nothing there, the same way with solar, there was nothing.
Correct. And we, we had the applicant tell us our process is broken.
Yeah.
Yep, I, and I think it is, I think it is, but I think it. We can fix it, we're trying to make it better. So just something to think about when we want to, you know.
I think that's.
Modify, modify the, the procedures for approvals.
Yeah. That's why we're elected, to make the interpretation, is this the right place?
It's just a matter of, of cooperating.
No, communicate, communicate.
Communication is.
That's it, communications, they're all targets.
Yeah, and a lot of, and just, and I'm not throwing stones at anything, but a lot of times, and it's the application part, and it's not Randy. It's, he, we get this stuff dumped out at five o'clock at, in the, at night. And, and then it's like, and you're, it's like.
Scrambling.
And we, and then give you.
Before our meeting.
Give you no time to even look at the bylaws and to just read and digest it, to think about it.
Yeah.
And I need that time.
No, that's all right.
I've actually.
Yeah, just.
Can't be like that all the time.
I, I've actually tried to slow out, get this down for my sake, because I would rather have it, get it figured out before they come into a public hearing. And the playing board have all kinds of problems with it, all kinds of changes.
It, it's a strategy sometimes.
So, yeah, that's right. It's like, well, we're just trying to help the applicants, it's just we're trying to handle, we're trying to help them.
Yeah.
And we're trying to dump some, like, we get, how long is that? And it's, it's, and we have done it. But I don't know, we have done it.
But that's not all our fault, is it?
No, 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 but so, I mean, that was unique, but the whole idea is that we don't have an applicant come in.
Right.
And have an applicant just like hanging.
Yeah.
Did they come to EDC? They had a couple of.
They're really tough.
You never heard of what we had.
Yeah.
Are we prohibited from discussing potential applicants before they officially fly? I mean, can we discuss in this meeting what could possibly coming up, or is that all?
Right. Only is that, you want it that way. I mean, if you talked about ad hoc, we haven't heard, if you're just thinking, Joe Collins, like, somebody who wanted to do something on the property, yeah, but you can always have informal discussions or something. You just can't make any official, we'll take any official action.
Okay, so is that something that we can do in meetings where you might be a little informous on future products that you see coming in? That you haven't had formally submitted yet, but, you know?
And sometimes it's applicants would actually like to come to the board informally.
Right.
They thought of what they're doing, what do you think, you know? And, you know, they, they're told that anything in the formal reading means nothing, and, you know, an application where they just like need to get there. We're then, you get some feedback from the board, but, uh, like, you know, this stool or no way, no how, or we're gonna have to get something determined, you know, to, before they go to the official.
Sometimes it, it just seems like when we're, when we get the information on a Wednesday night at seven o'clock, uh, we're completely surprised, first we're ever hearing of it, but it's, they've been in front of this office for several weeks discussing it. And it would be nice to kind of get, hey, so someone's thinking about doing this, or someone's thinking about doing this, and then we can kind of mull around and, and.